Sean guys here.
She can't leave now Elizabeth.
Yes, I can.
You'll be fine.
Good to go.
All right, I'll call this Board of Selectments meeting to order for Tuesday, May 5th. Roll call, we have myself, Eric Gasperini, Phil Crossman. If he'll acknowledge that he's present.
Present.
Pam Alley. Donald Poole.
Present.
Jake Thompson is absent. We have, we also have.
I'm here.
Oh, Jake, Jake Thompson is present. And we have Andy Doherty Town Manager and Elizabeth Bunker Deputy Town Clerk, taking minutes. So, approval minutes from the following meetings. We'll add a couple meetings later, but for now, let's start with April 2nd, 2020.
So moved.
Phil Crossman moves to accept the minutes. Eric Gasperini seconds the motion. All those in favor? Eric Gasperini votes yes. Phil Crossman?
Yeah.
Jake Thompson?
Yes.
Donald Poole?
Yes.
The April 14th.
What about me, Eric?
I'm sorry, Pam Alley.
I vote yeah.
All right, sure. Now we're going to the April 14th meeting. I move we accept the minutes.
Second.
Phil Crossman seconds the motion. All those in favor? Eric Gasperini votes yes. Phil Crossman?
Yes.
Pam Alley?
Yes.
Jake Thompson?
Yes.
Donald Poole?
Yes.
And the April 23rd, 2020 meeting. I move we approve the minutes.
Second.
Phil Crossman seconds the motion. All those in favor? Eric Gasperini votes yes. Phil Crossman?
Yes.
Pam Alley?
Yes.
Jake Thompson?
Yes.
Donald Poole?
Yes.
Item number three, approved and signed treasurer's warrant number 44. So moved.
Second.
Phil Crossman seconds the motion. All those in favor? Eric Gasperini votes yes. Phil Crossman?
Yes.
Pam Alley?
Yes.
Jake Thompson?
Yes.
Donald Poole?
Yes.
All right, approve agenda. We do have three additions. We need to add the minutes from both the February 25th and 26th meeting, meetings. And add election clerk appointments for 2020 through 2022. I move we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Phil Crossman seconds the motion. All those in favor? Eric Gasperini votes yes. Phil Crossman votes yes. Pam Alley?
Yes.
Jake Thompson?
Yes.
Donald Poole?
Yes.
Okay, see no communications and obviously no speakers on the floor. We'll go on to committee and department reports and appointments. Accept an appropriate donation. We do have some very generous donations.
I move we accept.
Phil Crossman makes a motion to accept the donation and put them in the appropriate count. Eric Gasperini seconds the motion for a vote. Eric Gasperini votes yes. Phil Crossman?
Yes.
Pam Alley?
Yes.
Jake Thompson?
Yes.
Donald Poole?
Yes.
Road Commissioners Report. Any questions or? Okay, hearing none. We'll go on to Word and Current Status Report. Any questions, comments?
They indicated in their report that they would have an update by the 27th. Have we had one?
Yeah, Dan Bigford and I joined Brent and Megan yesterday on a phone call just to get a quick update. So since the April 17th report, they did finalize the bid draft documents, which you have, which I included in the email that went out earlier this week or last week. So that's, that's what they had worked on in between. So yeah, we had met with them just yesterday and I had a call with them earlier, so.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Do you expect us to read all 620 something pages?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
I do.
The plot thickens towards the end.
Yeah, I bet.
I mean, you know, for what, what you guys are going to want to know is kind of in the first, you know, probably dozen or so, 10 or 12 pages. It outlines the information for bidders and so it does talk about, they have. I can go over more of that in, as we come up on that part of the agenda under old business.
Well, I looked through the sketches and stuff, but the other stuff was kind of boring. I didn't read much of it. Yeah, I didn't know which part I should look at, but I'll look at the first 12 pages for sure.
Okay.
Public Health Team Report and Update.
So just a few things for you to know that we are working on. By the end of the week, we are expecting to mail out. Kind of like a May letter as we did in April to seasonal residents and property owners. It kind of, a lot of questions we've been getting kind of outline. You know, what, what should we expect when we come? What's changed? And so we're trying to kind of focus in on some of those things that we do know is different or has changed. It does coincide with the governor's order, which is effective through May for a lot of those orders. So we're just trying to, it's going to be from the health team. And I'll, I'll share a draft tomorrow as it kind of gets closer to being final with you guys. You know, but we're, as we talked about, as the health team emphasizing still the similar message to what was there in April, which at this time is, you know, if you, if you, if you don't have to, you know, do think about not coming up for May at this point. The circumstances that concerned us in April still exist in May. You know, and then outlining what, what new orders might be in place or what new expectations are in place now based on what we've learned, so. The other thing to talk about. Been a lot of talk about parades and events. Again, getting into further into the summer and what, what could be different. So we are reaching out to those that organize some of those bigger events to try and find ways, if there's ways possible for some of this to still happen in some form or not. Some of it will be just maybe too difficult to try and do without promoting gatherings. So as soon as we have information from, from the state or if, you know, based on what we know now, we can talk through some of that. We've already started talking about Memorial Day Parade, for example. So more to come on that as that gets fleshed out. The other things that would be good to have you guys talk about or think about today and maybe discuss at the next meeting in more detail and with maybe some decisions is how, you know, if and how some changes might occur on town properties. A lot of people asking about the quarry use. General use of parking lots, you know, in the summer, sometimes there's activities or things that happen in parking, in our parking lots. The public restrooms was asked about and then generally town parks, you know, should there be something different at any of the town parks? To discourage gathering, whether it's signage or removal of tables or, you know, what have you, just to kind of talk about any of that. I don't know if folks have thoughts, questions, concerns that we can get information together for you for before any decisions or if you want to just kind of talk openly about that now.
Well, I suppose I could, could call a meeting for the Park Commission. If necessary, that we could talk about if there are tables at any of the beaches or, you know, like State Beach or wherever. We could go and collect them up and store them. For the summer, if we think that they shouldn't be, you know, out and about. And the quarries, I don't, I guess that's just going to have to be social distancing as far as the quarries go, right, Andy?
Yeah, I mean, the reality of enforcing something at the quarry is going to be challenging with no changes to enforcement. You know, or a local effort to, you know, have, have someone there. I mean, again, signage goes only so far. You know, so that is a concern is the effectiveness of any kind of rule change or policy or, you know, kind of like, you know, what we expect of activity around the quarry. So that will be. In practicality, pretty difficult, but.
Right.
You know how popular those places are.
Yeah, I know. Well, as far as the parks are concerned, I can, I can send out an email too, and they might, people might not want, want to have a meeting right now. But I can send an email out if you'd like to see if anybody would like to volunteer and we could go around and gather up those tables. You think that's a good idea?
Okay. I know some of the businesses, I did talk to, had a kind of like a coffee, virtual coffee hour kind of thing with maybe eight or nine businesses the other day. One of the things that did come up was public restrooms, you know, at the old fire hall. So I don't know what thoughts are on that. I know, you know, from our perspective. The ability to kind of clean, clean that off, clean that out after nearly every use. It might be an expectation and I don't know, you know, we're not in a position right now to be able to accomplish that. And so I just want to, you know, for you guys to either know or maybe talk about, you know, what your expectations are of the, of the public restroom this summer, or at least for right now.
How often does it get cleaned on a normal, you know, normal times?
I think just about daily when it's open.
Well, I mean, in that case, you know.
I would say there's some people that would disagree with that daily cleaning, but.
I can tell you daily it gets.
Anyway.
Daily it becomes a mess.
Yes, all right, fair enough.
It doesn't get done multiple times a day, but it does get down, done just about every day, but it is only once every day.
Usually in the morning, probably.
Right, early in the morning.
There's probably just a lot more traffic goes through there than I originally thought, so.
Yeah, the comments usually I get from the person that cleans is they can't keep up with the, with the paper products usually on a good day. If there's, if there's a couple, there's only leave one or two extras in there and those usually disappear basically during the day. So that, it is something that does get used a lot, you know, just based on what I hear from the cleaning needs. You know, so that I guess would be kind of a concern. A lot of business owners are grateful that it is there. Otherwise, it's their bathrooms that they have on that people are using. They're not necessarily intended for public use, but.
I mean, if we keep the bathroom clean, you know, daily, if we clean it daily and people are supposed to wash their hands after they use the bathroom, pandemic or not. I guess I don't see why we'd close it, at least at this point in time.
I guess the question becomes, is the expectation then? I know it, it seems, you know, as though it would be expected, but to be done more than one today.
No, I would.
I, I think that if we could find somebody that would be willing to go in and, and check on the, and clean it more than once, once a day, I think we absolutely should. I don't, I don't think it's going to be hard to close down a public restroom. I mean, what do you do? But I think we need to make sure we have a reliable person that will go in and, and clean. I mean, that's personal opinion. I don't know.
I agree that we have to, we have to try to keep it open. It's just with the step up and. The standards that things have to be cleaned, can we meet that once a day, twice a day? And we also don't know what kind of traffic we're going to have this summer, so maybe it won't be needed, needed to be cleaned as much, but I agree that we should probably try to find a solution if we, if we can find one that works.
So do you want to, at least for May, just keep it closed for right now and then next time we meet, if I can get you some sort of idea on whether it's likely or what a cost might be to get that to happen?
Yeah.
I think, yeah, so I would agree with keeping it closed for this, the rest of this month.
I agree.
Okay.
What, what are the normal hours that it's open in the summer?
Oh, I think it's usually before seven that it gets opened up and sometime after 7:00 PM or shortly thereafter roughly is when it gets closed.
So the person who cleans now, Andy, do you think they would be able or willing to put in a few more visits there?
I'd have to ask currently, at this moment, we don't have anyone cleaning the buildings right now.
Oh, oh dear.
We, we might want to shorten the amount of time it's open, like on the later side, it still open up at seven, but I think leaving it open for 12 hours a day seems a little much. Maybe that's part of why the toilet paper goes missing so often.
Okay, we can look at some of that. All right, so Pam, you'll, we sent an email out to the Parks Commission.
Okay.
Okay. I'll wait to hear back from you on that or watch the email. Any other kind of questions about what's, kind of what's going up or what you've seen posted or, you know, thoughts or directions?
I think we kind of have to take another, a little bit of a wait and see approach on some of the other ones like the quarries. I mean, obviously we'd all like to be able to use them this summer, but. If, you know, cases start to go up again, it's going to be tough for us to open that back up without. You know, fear of having our own cluster of cases out here, so.
Right.
I guess we kind of have to, my, my point is we kind of have to wait and see what happens this month and see how it goes and then reassess. I would think it's a little cold to go swimming in the quarries even in the middle of June anyway, so we have a little bit of time.
Yeah, I think there's a very limited number right now that are willing to go in.
Yeah.
Did want to touch on a little bit. So I'd mentioned I had kind of a small group of businesses, you know, joining a virtual coffee hour. It was pretty well received. You know, but from what our perspective, we're not necessarily quite sure the town's role in, you know, the convening with the business community and just how heavily we play in that. I didn't seem to have a problem with. You know, kind of having a cup of coffee quote, you know, with folks, you know, but just kind of want to throw it out just so you guys are aware and maybe just kind of. Provide a little bit of guidance on what you would expect, you know, from, you know, your perspective on involvement with the business community through some of this. So, you know, some of it, because Gabe and I were talking, kind of goes towards still maybe not being entirely clear what the board's vision is for economic development. Kind of piece of the strategic plan that we started outlining, where it was kind of new for the board to, you know, kind of want to focus in on that to some degree and beyond broadband. The downtown master plan in general, kind of what that looked like. You know, or just maybe some reassurance, I guess, from you that you're okay with or do support us reaching out to the business community. Beyond just resource sheets and, and talking with them about how to safely open and manage people or help with employees.
Well, how much more beyond that, you know, can you go? I mean, it's really, I mean, it's going to be a tough economic time this summer, likely, and. But there's really very little as a town, you know, town government that we can do to change that situation unless we can make people teleport here.
I mean, we're certainly limited with, as a government, you know, what we can do without town meeting vote in terms of expending any monies. Should that come, you know, as a possibility, but. So at the very least, it would be, you know, my, just my involvement in, in meetings. It did sound like there were, I know there's more that would like to be part of conversations based on the ones that were at the talk the other day. There would really appreciate more frequent conversations with them. You know, so it, it would certainly be. Let's say it wouldn't be a lot of time per se, but you know, just, you know, spending that time in, you know, with them and being able to facilitate, you know, that conversation, you know, for the foreseeable future anyways.
That sounds like a really, a really wise, a wise move. I would encourage it to continue and perhaps even become more frequent.
Okay. I think this one we kind of focused on just trying, me trying to get a feel of, you know, where, you know, some of the businesses are, some are still waiting to open, some have opened, you know, and been able to modify. I think there's, you know, in some cases, question as to whether they'll be able to open, you know, with the current orders and even with the governor's plan for the next four months kind of being outlined. There's still a lot of gray area. There's still, you know, in some cases, not necessarily a good. View as to what, you know, open might look like for some of them. So, you know, did talk a little bit just generally about that plan and, you know, what folks were feeling around that. You know, a lot of talk about the, so kind of the supply in transportation systems for us is our two big limiting factors here. You know, and trying to keep a pulse on how the grocery store is doing with, with food and getting freight. You know, which is different than the ability to transport it on the ferry boat, you know, so that, I know that advisory board meeting is a Thursday. I had asked Mark to put on the agenda, time for the islands to be able to talk kind of about. Where the ferry service is and kind of letting us know what, what they're thinking for capacity and schedules into the summer. You know, they did modify for this week, Tuesdays and Thursdays for us are back to the full summer schedule as we had it. You know, still limited passing, you know, walk-on counts and to be probably helpful, I think, from our team's perspective anyways, to kind of get an idea what, you know, if they could kind of mirror, you know, expectations based on the state. Staged approach, what they're thinking into the summer. Again, as we message to the summer residents and the visitors in, you know, in the year-round community, you know, what, what they can expect and a lot of that will hinge on the ability to get to and from the island. So. Don't want to fly in the dark if we can help it.
Anything else on this? When that case is going to election clerk appointments for 2020, 2022. I move we approve this list for election clerks.
Second.
Phil Crossman seconds the motion for a vote. Eric Gasperini votes yes. Phil Crossman?
Yes.
Pam Alley?
Yes.
Jake Thompson?
Yes.
Donald Poole?
Yes.
All right, old business, Department of Public Works Facility, review bid documents.
All right, so I tried to summarize again in those first few pages of both of the bid documents, which was separate from the drawing documents for each of these projects. The, the bridge has a much more defined timeline, so the permitting around working in the water. So October 1st is there, soon as they can begin the in-water construction. And then by November 20th, they're supposed to be substantially complete with a final completion by December 11th for the whole project. The garage is a little bit different. You know, and that's, it's more on our timeline and I know the board's goal has been to, at the very least, have the salt sand shed done before this coming winter. God forbid we think about that already. You know, so it kind of threw out there November 1st for a, you know, tentative completion date for the salt sand shed. Be nice not to wait too far into November before we start getting the barge loads, if that's how we do it, of salt and sand. And then it's a tentative date to try and get the, the whole project done by December 31st. You know, tentative is a good thing for you guys to maybe think about when the bids do come in. So if there's no concerns with the bid documents from your perspective, we could have those out by the end of the week. In two weeks, have a pre-bid meeting. It wouldn't be mandatory unless we want it to be mandatory, but it gives an opportunity for those interested in bidding to. I mean, presumably join us on a Zoom call. I don't know if we can work around in any way. It'd be nice for some of them that if they've never worked out here to at least experience what it is to get a ferry ride out here, but I don't know if that's going to be likely at this point. You know, but if the bids are, come back to us by June 10th, that'd give enough time for the engineering, engineers to, you know, work through the responses and provide their recommendations to you. For a possible bid award the week of the, it'd be the 15th of June. I think the 16th was, I think that's Tuesday. So that one, you know, depending on how the bids come in, there might be some flexibility on your end and the expectations to have the, the garage totally complete. You know, that may or may not change the, the bid price. If, if there's an expectation it'd be done sooner, there's a possibility you could. Finish up the, as long as the foundation and the building is up, you could do a lot of the finish work inside that building into or maybe even through the winter possibly, if it made a difference in price. So just be good to kind of get your idea and kind of where you, where you guys stand on expectations for that completion.
Those complete dates look great. I mean, I guess they'll, they'll let us know if that's a reality or not. When we start getting answers, when we start getting bids. You know, they might come back with completely different dates.
Yeah, I know a lot of. I did ask about, so a lot of these jobs at this scale usually have a lot of subcontractors with the person putting the bid in and they manage all of that. So I was asking about, you know, especially with the public works garage, you know, the ability, potentially to have, you know, if there's an ability to have local contractors of any, any sort. Be able to do some of that site work, you know, that'll reduce that transportation costs certainly and the logistics to getting stuff to and from. I know Eric had asked earlier this week about, you know, potential impact it might, may or may not have on a reduced ferry schedule to, you know, have the bigger equipment coming back and forth and workers coming back and forth. So. If there's ways to, you know, find, find ways to get local contractors in contact with some of those folks. My understanding is having them attend the pre-bid meeting would be a big, big next step in that. You know, so we can certainly, you know, publish and make these documents available so folks are aware and. You know, relay that message to them. You know, and then presumably if they're able to connect with and talk to some of those companies that are larger and would like, more likely be bidding on the full projects. You know, that'd be an opportunity then for them to connect and continue a conversation potentially. Any questions on timeline? I know the bridge is a pretty sensitive project with some of the things in place there to make sure that the granite does get put back and on the way out to be able to fix that boat launch. You know, so we're just, anything on that one from you guys?
I don't think we ever made a final decision on whether or not to raise the bridge. I don't believe we ever, we've talked about it a lot certainly, but we never did a final decision about what. If we wanted to actually do that.
So their, their drawing, drawings in the bid documents call for a two-foot increase in the structure, which wouldn't, it wouldn't, it would be. You know, advantageous as far as cost, it wouldn't become too cost prohibitive to go two feet and they, they tried to do that analysis. If you go a third, you know, one more foot and go to three feet. He said the, the price difference is pretty, such to get pretty substantial because of the back fill and the retaining walls that have to be built for it. You know, but to go two feet is within, I can't remember the number that they had. I want to say it was something in the ballpark of 20 grand maybe to go two feet and to go three feet, it was substantially higher. I can pull that out again from one of their presentations and follow up on that.
I think, I think we would be, it would be wise of us to add the two feet. I, I think.
I agree if it's. Go ahead, Pam.
No, that's fine.
I would say I agree. If we can, if we can add the two feet and it's not a huge increase in cost, then I feel like we probably should do that.
Yeah, and the original proposal was going to be more than that and it was going to be very intrusive on the surrounding geography. The two feet is not going to have. Anywhere near the impact that they originally talked about, so I'm in favor of the two feet too.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure everyone was on board with that. Okay, um. Are we all ready to go on to new business?
Yeah, if there's no, between tonight and then into tomorrow, if I don't hear anything from any of the board members, I, do I assume that it's okay to go out Friday for, you know, to be posted?
Yeah, the bid documents look fine to me.
Okay.
I browse them. I have browsed the first dozen pages or so. I didn't. Read all 600 pages.
I'll, I'll try to get through the, I'm just in the middle of another close. I'm in a busy cycle right now, but after tomorrow, I can try to, tomorrow night I can try to take a look, but. From what it sounds like, everyone's comfortable with it. I don't think I'll have any major questions, so I'm fine if they go out Friday.
Likewise.
Let's go on to new business then. Open few bids. Did we receive any bids?
Uh, we did get one. Um, I knew I had reached out to the other, all three on the island. Um, one wasn't interested. Um, one did submit and another one, um, had, had, had some interest. Um, and then at last minute, it decided not to. So, um, opening the one now. All right. So from vinyl energy, got plan one and plan two, as we've had in the last couple of years. So plan one is the pay-as-you-go fixed price plan. And the second option is the discounted pre-buy fixed price plan. So it's a 25 cent, uh, per gallon discount. We'd have to deposit 27,950, um, by July 10th. Um, the fixed price under plan one would be a $1.92 for heating oil, $2.23 for, for kerosene, 221 for road diesel fuel, 603 for propane. Um, under plan two, it'd be a $1.67 for heating oil, $1.98 for kerosene, $1.96 for diesel fuel and 503 for, um, propane.
Been a long time since we seen prices like that. I move, we accept the bid, um, for the second plan.
Second.
Just one question. Sorry, one question. That, that's the same plan that we used last year, right? We bought, we, we prepay and we get a discounted.
Correct.
Okay. Yep. That's all I wanted to know.
And move the seconded. Any more discussion? Hey, uh, hearing none. Um, Eric Gass for any votes? Yes. Phil Crossman?
Yeah.
Pam Alley?
Yes.
Jake Thompson?
Yes.
Donald Poole?
Yes.
All right. And now do you want to motion as well, Andy, to actually deposit that 27, to write a check for that $27,000 or can you?
No, I don't need one for that. If it, it falls within the, the budget, budgeted amount, we just pull it from the different appropriate accounts.
Okay. All right. Now my, I don't want to waste nothing. We're on to, yes, Knox County Sheriff's contract.
All right. So this was, um, like spot, well, Rick kind of ran out in December 31st. Um, as I mentioned, the last meeting had, I think I mentioned the last meeting. Um, it had a couple of follow-up emails, um, and conversations with the sheriff and the, in the, um, county administrator. Um, so there are a few things that we, you guys have talked about over the last year or two. Um, you know, every time this comes up. So just some of the things that I had, I'd provided you with a strike-through copy, I believe, um, report packet last week. So just highlighting some of those changes, proposed changes, um, to send in. Not knowing where the county will be on any of this, but, um, you know, currently we provide the vehicle, um, in the fuel, um, as well as the maintenance and repair of the vehicle. The county covers it on their insurance, but we pay the additional, um, costs and, and the, um, deductible if work needs to be done on it. So the, you know, based on what I've heard, there's a, you know, you guys would prefer that the county provide the vehicle, you know, when it comes up for replacement. Thought I'd put that in there.
Yeah. It's right now, it's just you are proposal.
What's that?
This is just your proposal. They haven't signed. They have.
Yeah. Based on what I've, you know, you guys have talked about over the last year or two, um, it's what I'm going to propose. We send back to them. Um, when they sent me the, the, the updated plot copy, it was just new dates and they added, um, the sheriff. Um, in the very first paragraph, um, of, of the agreement acknowledging that this contract is between the commission and the sheriff, instead of just the commission. You know, so these are things, yeah, that I'm proposing that we consider, um, offering them as a, as a change in the contract. Uh, section seven talks about the equipment, office space and telephone, which, you know, we've provided the office, the equipment, um, all of that at the public safety building. Would propose obviously that we continue to provide the office space and that we continue to provide the internet and phone service at the office. But the changes would be that the county, um, take on the cost of the computer itself, um, in access to the software they need to have access to, along with the printer. You know, they have their own IT support, um, within the county. Um, then generally they've, they've done that, but just, you know, I think by way of contract, it should, you know, the IT costs, you know, don't think they should be on us, uh, for their computer. And currently we've paid for a cell phone, um, for quite a few, or for last few years anyways. Um, as I understand it, they're on a, I believe a plan with US Cellular, um, at this point, which I know does get better coverage out here now than it had. I don't know if that's, um, a position you guys would, would like to see the county take that phone back, um, into their plan, um, or carry a separate one, um, to our budget.
I'm shocked that the county doesn't, you know, give their deputies a cell phone plan.
Well, they.
For, for business use.
They do. The problem is we haven't had great coverage and so it was outside of their plan, um, for quite a while. Um, and so instead of them carrying one line, um, outside of the carrier they were using, we were covering the cost of that cell phone.
Well, I mean, yeah. And you're not going to have much luck making them change their carrier if they're satisfied on.
Right. And if they're, if they're using, I know they've gone back and between Verizon and or US Cellular, you know, we'd have, we've had the AT&amp;T account now for a while. You know, but if they're using US Cellular, which I, I think they are, um, you know, that coverage has gotten better out here in the last few years. So in the last year.
It's perfect. As a matter of fact, you know, where any, any place you have AT&amp;T coverage, you are, you also have US Cellular.
So I would suggest that you consider, um, modifying the contract to say that the county would be providing that cell phone going forward.
Absolutely.
I agree.
Sorry.
Another thing, you know, it's not a huge deal necessarily. It's more on principle, but for years, um, when they have to transport a prisoner via marine patrol, we have to, you know, we get a bill and it might be either 500, $750. I could understand if we had our own police department and we were transporting prisoners to Rockland, but, you know, them transporting, we shouldn't, the town should not be paying. You know, people get transported all the time. The town doesn't get billed for that. You know, maybe the next time one, one of those bills come, we just don't pay it. Just see what happens.
Well, that's section eight and what I was proposing that you guys consider trying to modify with the contract is having the county pay for those outside agency transport costs, um, of the officers or the prisoners. Now, I will say that I don't think, you know, that's something we, we have seen for a while, but it does have in the contract, should there be a fee for that, that we do pay it. Um, but to Eric's point, um, you know, I know we're, we are a little bit different, but you know, you don't, I don't assume that any of the towns on the mainland get billed for mileage and cost to transport, you know, people from their communities to wherever they gotta go.
Ex- exactly. And we are part of the county. We do pay taxes into the county. The, the county can pay for it.
So I didn't, I didn't touch on the housing piece in that. Um, I know that's been a conversation that we've had a lot, um, last couple of years. I think it's to, to, it's worth talking about. And I think to modify that too much further, um, you know, it comes a point where it cuts in and becomes a con- union, which is, you know, on their end, but it affects us as a union contract negotiation between the, the sheriff's off, you know, the, the patrol or the officers and the county. Um, you know, and I believe that this year is, um, they'll be going through that contract, that union contract. So I think that's one that, you know, we should, um, talk with them about, um, and clarify so that, you know, there isn't this ambiguity. Do they live here somewhere else? And be clear on, you know, what the board or the town expects of, of, you know, where the deputy might reside. You know, the town does pay for the majority of, um, the housing costs for that, that person, um, out here. And so it's, um, kind of been implied that they'll live here. Um, you know, but not every deputy is the same, um, or has the same expectations. So it's, I think, a conversation that should be ongoing with, uh, with the county, but maybe not necessarily addressed in this contract draft for this, for the year.
Do we actually ever pay like the 4,500 in electricity and fuel costs?
Um, it comes close. Um, it was 5,500 a few, up till a couple of years ago. Um, and we reduced it to 45 because it hadn't come close. So the 45 does come fairly close. It does depend on, you know, where, you know, what the property is, um, where the house is.
Right.
What we're doing right now is paying out a thousand dollars a month just to the deputy, um, which is something that they'd get a 1099 for at the end of the year. And that they're, they're choosing where, where they reside, where they live. We don't.
Cause the seven, the 750 a month and then the 4,500, you have 13,500, well, according to my math. So over a thousand dollars a month, we're paying for a deputy who doesn't live here, who's not here on the island all the time. It just seems like a lot to me.
Well, and I think that's where the discussion that you guys, you know, should have, you know, which I think goes beyond the ability to assign something, um, sooner rather than later. You know, cause I think you are getting into, you know, union contract expectations as well. You know, it's just say it's been a little bit different, um, in the last few years.
Yeah.
A lot of people do, uh, that I've talked to, I know, agree with what Donald's saying. So I just think that's a conversation to continue.
Right. I don't know what, I mean, other than demanding he lives here.
No, I, I don't want to demand someone move someplace they don't want to. It's just, it still bugs me that we're paying a dish for, for a service that we're supposed to get and.
Well, I mean, we're getting.
Understand, we have, we have, we have to have a contract in place. So kind of past the point for this year, but I, I would, I would like to see that changed at some point if we can.
Yeah. So I mean, you know, what the contract lays out very clear is the number of hours, um, that we're going to have coverage for. Um, it doesn't, you know, it talks about what will provide a housing, you know, kind of allowance or a portion of the housing, certain amount of the housing cost. Um, but it doesn't explicitly spell out the expectations that the deputy live there beyond the, the shift coverage. Um, you know, so if they were to work their, their four shifts back to back, back to back, and then leave for three days, for example. Um, that's where I was kind of alluding to. It's, it's been different in the past and you've had, you have had deputies that, you know, live here, um, you know, and they, and they did give damn darned close to seven days a week coverage. Um, you know, so it, it is, um, you know, just different. You can't assume that every, every deputy comes with the same level of, you know, ability or expectation to, to, to move here.
Okay. Well, so at this point in time, you know, you'll just bring this to Rick and then you'll come back with whatever changes get made at that meeting and then we'll have another round edit.
Yeah, the county commissioners meet next week. Um, you know, so if there's other, you know, changes you want to have addressed, you know, tonight, you can make those motions. Um, if you're fine with the proposed, um, and want to, um, send what, what's been drafted as proposed, I can send that, um, for their consideration next week. You know, depending on the timing of it, I'll try to, uh, make a point to attend, um, that meeting virtually. Um, I'm sure there could be some questions on that.
Right. Yeah. Just for right now, I say we send it as drafted and when we have a final contract, we can actually make a motion to approve it. But for now, if there's no other comments, why don't we just send it along and see what.
I agree.
Okay. So see here, budget workshop. Only a couple more items. Standing community development that should be pretty far back in your books.
So I think I have left that you guys need to go over donations, the community development and the debt service.
Okay. Sorry, I forgot. I missed the donations. Let's do, let's start off with donations then.
Okay. So this is pretty, um, similar to last year's, um, what the budget committee was comfortable or willing, um, to recommend. The, just pull up the sheet here. So the pan quiz cap surplus food, lifelight and new hope for women, uh, were the ones that the, um, budget committee, you know, put forth as a recommendation. Um, pan quiz, as you know, covers, um, quite a few programs around, um, more than just heating assistance, um, does cover some home repairs. See if I can get through the letter real quick. They do provide, um, us in their annual letter, um, an idea of kind of what their service value was to the town last year, to residents of the community last year. Um, the total value.
It's always substantially more than what we donate.
Right. So for the year ending May 31st, it was a $27,000 value. Um, that came in the form of heating, um, central heating program, improvement program, child adult care, food, um, heating assistance, home buyer education. And the biggest one was the, the heap, why heat program. They're asking for the $357, which is equal to 1.3% of the value of the services received.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with that. I'm fine, I'm fine with lifeline and new hope for women.
Likewise.
I'm not sure about the main public or the is it health, health equality alliance? I'm just guessing by the abbreviation.
Yep. Health Equity Alliance.
What is, what is that?
Um, that one, it was formerly, it's a newer name, but it was formerly the Down East AIDS Network. Um, the Heal Agency or, or nonprofit is a public health agency serving clients in 14 out of 16 main counties. And they offer, um, free confidential HIV and HCV testing, sexual health and risk reduction counseling, emergency food pantry, medical case management, meloxone training and facilitated trainings for healthcare nonprofit businesses, et cetera.
I think we said no.
Cut that in half, Eric?
What's that? Sorry.
Do you think that should be cut in half or?
Well, I, I think they asked last year and we didn't, we didn't give them anything last year and I would say we go along with that.
Yeah, I don't.
I think, I think they asked last year.
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah, they've asked for.
Yeah, I would say, uh, my opinion would be to cut that to zero unless someone else has a.
I mean, it's only $500, but the, the pan quiz cap, should we increase that? If that benefit is so great, should we increase it a little bit more? Just round it up to 500. And then if you want to take out the 500 from Health Equity Alliance.
Would we gain anything more, Andy, by increasing our donation to the penguin's pan quiz cap?
I mean, yeah, there'd be, it'd be closer to 0%. It'd be just over 0%. Um, I don't have that spreadsheet open right in front of me to be able to put that in.
Okay. If we increase our, if we increase our donation, there are community members get more. Okay.
I mean, you guys, I mean, it's not a terribly huge line altogether as it is. So, I mean, it's, you can see it. And I think, can you see the spreadsheet on the screen right now?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Like even if we improved everything and up that one to 500, you're not talking. It's, it's not a huge number. Like I don't.
No, it's not.
We're in a pandemic. Why, why don't, why don't we reach out and try to help a little bit?
The budget committee, the budget committee was not interested in the 4th of July donation, I'm correct?
Uh, so the, as a 4th of July, um, so it's with the fireworks being a committee. Um, you know, that was on.
Oh, it's been moved.
That was under the town, the capital line, because that's where the reserve line sits within the budget.
So the 4th of July is the fireworks committee then, basically?
It's in the bookkeeping system is something that we've donated to in the past. And so it was just in there as 4th of July. I don't, um, recall exactly. It's been a few years since it's been funded for anything. So it's just, I think, just kind of a holdover in the system.
Oh, I see.
We can eliminate that then. Uh, can we? And still it's somewhere, as long as it's being funded somewhere else.
It's in the cap reserve.
Okay. All right.
Part of the budget.
All right. So we, when we strike the Fourth of July, increase pan quiz cap to five hundred dollars. So strike three hundred or strike three grand and add one hundred forty-three dollars to pan quiz cap. And what about the Health Equity Alliance? What do we think?
I'm, I'm in favor of donating it.
I am too. And until the government stepped up and provides us with the healthcare that we deserve, I'm in favor of it.
Okay. Let's keep it then. So what does that, what does that change that number to Andy? We cut out three, just.
So we, uh, one, two, three, two, there'll be three grand for, for the total for the one, two, three, four, five, for the six different organizations.
Oh, but, but what do we think about main public? Sorry. I would, I don't know. I don't, I know they've asked in years previous and I don't, I don't think we've donated. I donate privately, but I don't really know if the town should be donating.
No, I think we funded that in any way last year.
That was the budget committee's, um, opinion on that. And that, you know, it's not necessarily a town government type of service that we would be providing if they didn't exist, um, to, to, you know, for the most part. And so that's kind of, I think, what a lot of, what the budget committee was talking about when they looked at or considering when they looked at these requests is, I mean, a lot of other towns do the same thing is are these groups providing something that we would have to in their absence? You know, some get far more requests than we do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need to fund it. I don't think, I don't think the town itself as an entity is going to lose anything.
I agree. I think it's more a, a public obligation with main public. I, I'm private supporter myself, but I don't think it's a municipal op.
Right.
I agree.
Okay.
What was the budget committees? Was that what's on the screen? The twenty-three fifty-seven?
Yes.
So they pretty much just didn't have the five hundred dollars to the health alliance.
Right.
That's what they had cut.
Yep.
So if we add five hundred dollars to that and a hundred forty-three dollars to the pan quiz cap.
Should be three thousand.
So a lot of people on the island use that help alliance.
Um, they didn't provide.
Cause I've never even heard of it. So, I mean, that's all I'm asking.
They didn't provide the breakdown that we get from, um, pan quiz or from, um, yeah, pan quiz. Um, so I can't, I can't really say.
Is one of the services they provide, was that naloxone training or?
Yeah, train, training and distribution. Yep.
Okay.
I think that's, I think that's important to fund that.
I think that's pretty important out here too. So unfortunately.
Yeah, definitely, definitely.
Again, it's only five hundred dollars.
All right. So try to come for the total here. Five hundred thousand, five hundred.
Be three thousand, I believe.
All right. I move approval of the donations line at three thousand dollars.
Second.
Second.
Phil Crossman seconds the motion. Any more discussion? All right. Hearing none. Eric Gasper, any votes yes? Phil Crossman?
Yes.
Pam Alley?
Yes.
Jake Thompson?
Yes.
Donald Poole?
Yes.
Okay. Um, planning and community development. The very next picture.
Um, Gabe had worked through a pretty comprehensive, um, and detailed list of, um, goals and objectives. Um, so I don't know if you had a chance to really kind of look through some of that. A lot of that should have been built around what the board was looking to have accomplished or, and or what some of the committees were looking to accomplish. Um, so most of it shouldn't be too much of a surprise, other than the conversation around going from a part-time to full-time as it's presented in the budget. Um, you know, I had, I had asked her and we talked last, late last week about, um, you know, kind of coming up with a plan B as well. Um, cause I know there was certainly a lot of discussion with the, um, budget committee about this. Um, at, you know, ultimately they were in favor of, um, based on the work plan, um, giving it a year to see, you know, you know, how it goes. Um, you know, with the work plan and the way it was set out, there, there's the ability to check in. Um, you know, kind of a goal oriented kind of work product and to kind of see how it goes again. So, um, a lot of the emphasis is on the downtown master plan and making sure that that proceeds, um, in a positive direction. Um, some grant writing support across the board and some other places, um, you know, to, in an effort to kind of round out and seeing the need for GIS work, um, there was the proposal to include, um, you know, that person's, that's the time in, in doing GIS. Um, work to help keep databases updated, um, which is something we have to do with the tax maps at the very least, but there's a lot of other, um, things that could be accomplished with the GIS system as well. You know, we're trying, of course, looking into the, the broadband, um, piece. So, you know, assisting in that. The housing committee, um, of course, looking at sustainable housing options. Um, and not entirely sure where that goes. So had some time in there to support some of that work from that committee. Supporting the wastewater is still, um, you know, with, with reports to the board as well as, um, the outreach piece that's gone so well in the last year or two. Um, and then getting into the kind of public support and, and outreach piece, um, which is something we've talked more and more about. Um, I think you've all seen, you know, some of the efforts that come out of the work that has been happening around the outreach piece, you know, with Gabe's involvement. So, um, you know, the value with that. Um, so she'd gone through and had kind of added up those hours and it did come to, um, I think it was just shy, I don't got the just shy of twenty eighty, which is the full-time. Total one there. Um, but it was certainly no, no, um, certainly very easy to find other things to fill the, the few remaining hours to to justify the full-time if that was something that was of interest. Um, having had talked to her, um, before the weekend and through the weekend, there, again, the plan B would, um, kind of scale that back to keep it, um, you know, a part-time position, um, but also, um, move it to a more of a consultant-based, um, instead of a staff-based position, um, to do some of that. Um, you know, that would put it between somewhere between seven hun- seven hundred and a thousand hours worth of work. Um, we pare some of that down. And so it, it's just a matter of filling some of those gaps on that work plan that you have in your binders. Um, things like the GIS wouldn't be included at that point. Um, so if that's something of value that we want to see, um, built back up again and utilized throughout the community, throughout the town and different departments, um, we'd have to look at somehow trying to do that. Um, continuing with the selectmen strategic planning process and tying that in through, um, you know, the rest of the departments is something that would also need to be picked up.
Well, I appreciate how, you know, it's a very detailed plan. Obviously a lot of thought went into it. I would be okay with making it a full-time position for one year. But my understanding of her position was that we have, because we have so many large projects coming up in the next year or two, downtown master plan, public works garage, caring place, broadband, um, harbor improvements, you know? It was going to be good for you to have some help with grant writing and whatnot. But once those projects are completed, you know, a lot of them in the next couple of years, you know, that's going to definitely lighten the burden and, you know, the position, under my understanding, would then be eliminated. So, you know, I would be okay, I think, with a, offering her a one-year contract. And, but with the understanding that, you know, there won't be a renewal of the contract, you know, I think she does excellent work, but I don't want town government to get too large, you know, expand the tax base too much. Or, you know, put too much burden, I should say, on the taxpayer.
I wouldn't want to say, uh, with the, I would not want to say with the understanding that there'd be no renewal, but rather with the understanding that it is not guaranteed by any means.
Okay. Yeah. You're, that's a better way of saying it. So you're right, you know? It's likely a year from now, there might be some, you know, work, you know, there probably will be some work left to do, but position go back to part-time at that point in time. You know, she laid out very well how long she thinks it'll take to accomplish a lot of this stuff. And, you know, that's, that's excellent. You know, and, you know, if she says that one year from now she can accomplish most of this, then.
But in theory, with all the grant writing her, I mean, she should pay for her position over the course of the year. I mean, every year there's grant writing opportunities. So, I mean, I definitely agree that we should be looking at it from year to year, but, I mean, I, I think that she probably paid for her position many times over with grant writing in some of the years.
Yeah, I think, I agree with that point, Jake.
I think it's important, um, you know, on a couple of things here. So the, you know, we're talking about the work product, you know, Gabe's um, in the position currently, but, um, when we talk generally about the, um, the work products and what we want to accomplish, you know, there are, you know, whether it's her, a different staff member, or whether it's mid-coast economic development, you know, so, you know, the uncertainty, you know, of whether it's an employee versus a contract, you know, again, as, as people's, um, whereas things, circumstances may or may not change. You know, having a budget that would allow us to accomplish the work product, um, you know, is the ultimate goal. Matter of understanding then the, the cost, I guess, of, you know, whether it's, you know, option A, option B, option C kind of thing. Um, you know, so it did sound that, you know, some of what we're talking about could be more contractual, um, in, in concrete. Um, you know, some of the stuff in there is a little, little softer and, and more about developing some of that stuff and supporting some of the committees and maybe in some ways that we haven't or some committees in ways that we haven't before. Um, you know, another thing that we had talked about, um, you know, as part of a, a plan B is, um, the possibility of, um, in a discussion with you about, and the budget committees just came up last week. So the budget committee hasn't even talked about it. Um, you can see they've already gone through this once, um, but the possibility of a fellow. Um, you know, from the, through the Island Institute. Um, I think the first year commitment for that is about eight grand and the second year I think is ten. Um, you know, so that's something to possibly consider with, with some of the compliment, you know, to complement some of the, if you wanted to do a contractual base on some of the higher level, um, capital project, big grant writing things, um, to Jake and Donald's point, the, the grants that we're working on right now, or Gabe's working on right now. Um, you know, in conjunction with mid-coast economic development in the engineers, um, are in the millions. Um, so yes, absolutely. If we're successful in getting those, it, you know, pays for many parts of this budget. Um, or if the capital projects coming up, um, for just, you know, what looks like a, you know, a small amount of time, you know, what it would take to write them. Um, yes, the, the return is there, um, for some of the capital project things, um, if we're willing to go put the time in to go look for them and, and apply for them. So, you know, in terms of payback, you know, from that point, it is, I think, worth the investment for this community to have someone, you know, being able to spend the time that's needed to get the grant writing done. But I guess it's just kind of a matter of, you know, having those options within the budget, you know, to allow if we want to go in one direction or, um, you know, it's a full-time position, or if it were to be either a part-time position or a contract, doing some of these work pieces. Um, if we wanted to look at having an island fellow for one or two years, um, to help carry out maybe some of the other things in there that are more um, community support and, and committee support things, um, you know, maybe GIS work even, um, is another thing to consider.
Well, I mean, if Gabe feels like she can do the work, you know, without a fellow, then I would say, you know, I'm okay with this proposed budget. You know, you know, we don't know if, you know, an island fellow will necessarily work out, you know, and you have to get their feet wet. Gabe obviously is already well-versed in what's going on around the town office right now. But maybe someone else has a.
I think, no, I think she's doing a great job and we definitely should look at the one year contract with her and, and review every year if it works out that way.
Agreed.
Yeah, I agree that let's take the one-year approach and if it works out, we, we will discuss it next year.
Yeah.
And so do we want to go through this line by line or are you guys comfortable with that? It looks like a budget amount of eighty-one thousand, three hundred twenty dollars.
I'm comfortable with the bottom line.
Yeah. I mean, the major increases are due to it being a full-time position, correct? Because the retirement does obviously kick up the number.
Yeah. I mean, there's what forty, you know, forty-five thousand right there.
Yeah.
Or forty grand or so right there. So the service fee line, which this year is at thirty thousand five hundred is a big reduction. Um, a couple of things that were in there this year under that line was the, the broadband study as well as the, uh, floodplain, um, piece. So.
So I move approval, uh, for the planning line at eighty-one thousand, three hundred twenty dollars.
Second.
Phil Crossman second to the motion. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Eric Gasper, any votes yes? Phil Crossman?
Yes.
Pam Alley?
Yes.
Jake Thompson?
Yes.
Donald Poole?
Yes.
Okay. It's one of the debt services.
Well, some of these numbers can be solidified once we get its back, but of course that most likely won't be before we get, um, you know, the warrant ready for a town meeting. Um, so the placeholders in there, um, for the full, full bid amounts of the X. I don't know if I updated since we put this together. No, I guess it does. I did the ex, the other six hundred thousand, um, that's been approved for the public works facility. I did, um, have that number in there. Um, so some of that could be a little bit lower, um, because the interest rates, when I think I figured them, um, weren't, I think we're a little bit higher. Um, I do still want to try and reach out, uh, the first, um, before we finally, you know, sign, uh, uh, the final documents to see if there's, um, a way to look at the interest rates again. Um, still within, within the contractor, within the, the bid documents that we had outlaid. Um, I think the big, so that's, that's the biggest part of the increase there, the projects that we've already committed to, the garage, the bridge and the paving project. Um, the twenty-fourteen paving projects, a holdover, um, twenty-fifteen plow truck holdover, then the backhoe, um, is something that is, you know, would be a new consideration, um, that we haven't talked about or approved yet. Um, so that was, um, you know, just based on, on its age, based on its number of hours, it's still, um, you know, a reliable machine to some degree and as a five-day-a-week, you know, five, six, seven hours a day machine, it's starting to, starting to see its wear at that point. Um, and so it's just a matter of, you know, at what point do you want to see that? That machine upgraded to something newer with less hours. Um, and is this the year or not? Um, I know one of the concerns is with the salt sand shed at the, um, new location. And the way we clean Main Street currently with the backhoe, it would present a small challenge to try and figure out, um, either coordinate between two machines, three locations, or, you know, whether we wanted to, um, you know, buy, buy a new backhoe, um, and then shift the one that they have currently to public works or to transfer station rather. Um, and then shift that oldest one, um, to the new lot, which would only be used, you know, pretty much in the winter time to load the trucks. Um, which is, you know, about what it's good for at this point.
So the backhoe line on this is, this is under the assumption we would purchase a new one?
Correct.
Didn't we discuss possibly leasing one?
The, you know, there's a general conversation about it. Um, I don't know if I have off the top of my head. I think Carl had gotten some numbers for me, um, since we put the budget draft together. Um, I'll have to go back and look. Um, I'll have to go back and look. Um, I don't think it was too far off, um, from what we're looking at. I want to say it was somewhere in the ballpark of like fifteen to twenty grand a year, um, but I'll have to double check.
Cause I, I, I know we, we use the equipment and so the useful life is probably less than if it was a private citizen, obviously, but. So leasing, when we know we're going to need a new one every three to five years roughly, seems like a better option to me, but.
Yeah, and, yeah, if we lease, then we, you know, you know, I don't know how long this term is, about three or five years presumably.
Yeah, I mean, the one we have, this, this backhoe was, I think, purchased in two thousand
Right.
twelve, I believe.
Yeah, it was. So yeah, if we lease the equipment and then, you know, we use it and then we dump it off and get a new one in a few years. And before, you know, it racks up any expensive repair bills, hopefully.
I think the last one we bought was in the ballpark of a hundred thousand, um, for that size. Um, I think, you know, part of what I was asking, um, you know, Dan and the, Carl to look at was the the type, but you know, what are we asking for it to do? And do we need that size? Do we need to get a bigger size? Can we get a smaller size? Um, all of which change the price. Um, you know, and we've talked before about the ability, you know, what the backhoe's abilities are relative to some of the work we have to do, you know, like ditching, like um, culvert replacements, um, you know, there's some efficiencies and, you know, better work. Um, you know, output, you know, with like an excavator versus a, a backhoe. Uh, you know, we talked, you know, very loosely about the possibility of at least for a couple of months out of the year when we are, like, if we're going to commit to a ditching program, just like renting an excavator potentially next year for a few months, um, just to accomplish that task. You know, so I think, you know, we talked, again, we talked a lot about, you know, the equipment and what we need to cover for certain things. The backhoe this two thousand and twelve, um, I think Dan said it was pushing close to six thousand hours. Um, and usually it's around, in his experience, the seventy-five-hundred-hour mark that, um, you start seeing some significant engine. Um, let's say trouble, but you know, up, you know, repairs and maintenance that need to happen that aren't, you know, what you'd consider routine anymore. Um, and it's in a lot of cases, you know, again, in his experience, he's seen at that point, you're starting to talk about engine rebuilds or replacements. You know, and we, so part, part of the reasons the hours are so much higher on this one at this point in its life than the other one, the last one was, um, had a lot to do with how we, again, how we work it, um, the projects we were doing, you know, in that lifespan for that machine was, you know, included the Crockett's River Road, the Calderwood Neck Road, um, the other one we did, um, the ditching projects that we were doing, Zeke's Point Road. You know, so that was, you know, working, working in ways that, you know, if you had your druthers, you probably would have, might have chose different pieces of equipment to work with. Um, you know, so that's, you know, accounts for some of its additional wear and tear at its, you know, younger age, I guess we'll call it, but hours wise, it's got a lot of hours.
So in Dan's experience, he's in about seventy-five-hundred hours when some more major repairs start coming up, but we've already had some pretty major repairs and over the past couple of years and we haven't gotten close, you know, now we're starting to approach seventy-five-hundred hours, but you know, the last couple of years we made some major repairs and obviously been quite a ways away from seventy-five-hundred hours. So leasing seems like a better option perhaps if, you know, if we're using the equipment in a way that maybe is beyond its ability.
Just pulling up the, um, because I did go in and look. So yeah, I mean, to the point on, on repairs. Um, this year we did see quite a few, um, the last couple of years, um, it wasn't engine-related. Um, it was wear and tear on other parts, um, the axle, in particular for that front axle drive in particular was, I know, a challenge, a problem this year in which water it at some point, it worked its way in past the, the seals and, you know, rusted out kind of where the pivot point was. All right, so again, for the last, so I, when I looked at it, it was, I don't know if we talked about this last time or not. Um, for the last three and a half years, the average cost to repair for repairs was fifty-three thousand across the board for all of our pieces. The, the backhoe itself for the last three and a half years, not counting April through whatever the end of this year brings, has been just about thirteen thousand. So you start looking at the cost of something, um, newer and potentially paying between, you know, twenty-four and twenty-seven thousand, um, depending on what you end up with, um, for a brand-new one and essentially getting rid of a good portion of the repair bills. Um, you know, I think the other issue we have is downtime when we don't have that piece of equipment, we're, you know, there's not much to replace it with. The transfer station backhoe is usually an hour or two, or an hour anyways, worth of work before it's ready to go on the road and, and take a haul, um, wherever the work site is. So they're running into challenges with that.
Seems like leasing the equipment still seems like a pretty good bet, yeah. You know, that way we, you know, we have a new piece of equipment. And, you know, I'm not a mechanic, obviously, one of the most least mechanically inclined people you ever meet, but you know, if we have a crew that's keeping up with maintenance of our equipment, you know, certainly have seen that, that seal was going bad, especially, you know, it's pretty major piece, piece of the equipment that failed.
Yeah, I mean, my understanding with that particular seal and its location is it's not designed to take, um, grease like some of the other, um, areas and fitting areas that have. Um, it's just by design, it was meant to be an enclosed, you know, a closed system there. Um, water somehow over the year got its way in, it doesn't take much for, you know, for it to become a problem, but um, it's kind of on the front where that if material kind of falls on it, it can cover it up. Um, and it might have been something like that, that worked its way in that, you know, caused that gap, or it could have been, in, in either case, the biggest issue with that was it was a, a fitting that didn't allow for, you know, grease to be put in to keep the bearings, grease and functioning well.
Well, it seems like Andy and I are doing most of the talking here. Does anyone else have a, you know, an opinion about lease versus buy?
No, I got.
I just, I, I would just reiterate, I think leasing is the, is the better option, just because we would be able to rotate new pieces of machinery in. Um, obviously it depends on what the agreement is on that lease term, but purchasing, I, I think we're all in agreement that we need a new backhoe, hopefully this year, if we can work the budget that way, but, um, I don't think, I don't think purchasing a brand-new one is necessarily the best option.
What was the lease amount for you, Andy? Did you say that or?
I just remember ballpark, I have to get the, the paperwork, um, back again from, um, he might, he might email it to me. Um, I want to say if I remember correctly, it was in the ballpark of like fifteen to twenty grand a year.
And that, does that, I mean, does that include if there was an axle that failed that wasn't, you know, our fault, they repair that, or is that on us still?
I assume it's going to be like your leased cars. I mean, the stuff that's, um, kind of normal wear and tear, um, you know, it's going to be covered under certain things. You know, something like that, um, unless it's a manufacturer issue, um, it's something that they're going to be expecting us to cover most likely. Um, so I can get the particulars on that, um, before you make any final approvals, if you want.
Yeah, maybe that's a good idea. We can go on to, uh, the other items in that, in our debt service. This is only our first pass-through, you know, so, and we have time. So the next one then is, uh, this was in fourteen paving. When we already finished, we already finished cleaning that one off, so.
No, that one, the paving ones are usually ten-year payoffs. That one, fiscal year twenty-five will be the last one for that.
And four to fifty, or five fifty, sorry. We already have.
I think, um, this, the one in this budget reflected that you're looking at, I think will be the last payment for that one.
Yeah, fiscal year twenty. Cloud truck from twenty fifteen, we have only one more year after this. And the real big one, the new town garage. Obviously, that is what it is.
Hopefully it's less than what it says it is, but.
Right, yeah.
That number assumes we, we spend the full amount, right?
Right.
And by fiscal year forty-one, maybe even I'll have a gray hair.
Just have a couple of kids, you'll get plenty of gray hairs.
Well, that's okay. Uh, Carrion Place Bridge. Yep, and twenty nineteen paving, last year's paving project. How much money did we end up actually spending on that project, Andy? Because obviously quite a bit didn't get done.
Uh, I think it was, I want, I want to say three hundred and twenty-seven thousand jumps out at me. Um, yeah, somewhere right about that. It was under three fifty, over three hundred.
Right. Sounds about right, but at any rate, that is what it is now. But so you said before we approve any of this, though, you'd like to talk about new interest rates potentially?
I'd like to see if there's still a chance. I mean, I certainly, you know, without, you know, uh, starting over with a bid process, which wouldn't be, uh, great at this point, you know, for relations with, with a bank, but, um, you know, if there's a way to talk, um, knowing what the rates have done, um, to see if there is a way, I mean, we are adding the six hundred thousand in there, that's not part of the original bid documents, and so I don't know if there's a way to, you know, kind of have a conversation about any different rate amount potentially or not.
Well, maybe that's a good idea for now, because, you know, we don't have to approve this tonight, obviously.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind being able to go back to the budget committee, um, after you guys have gone through this. They, we haven't had them meet since March. Um, and I, I did start to coordinate something a couple of weeks ago and then we didn't do it. So I'd like to be able to pull them together one more time at least, um, to kind of see how they're feeling.
Yeah, that's a good idea. So I think the board is in agreement though about seriously considering leasing a backhoe instead of purchasing one.
I am.
Yeah, I feel good about that myself.
So you can look at those numbers as well for us and, you know, you know, find out what, you know, that sort of contract would have looked like.
Okay.
What we'd be responsible for, what they'd be responsible for, et cetera.
Sure.
So do we do the North County budget? I mean, it is what it is. I feel like we probably did do it.
Um, yeah, there's nothing really approved. We can talk, yeah, just to see what the number is. It, it did, um, see, it did go up.
No, of course, I thought it would go down.
I mean, you know, part of it's, part of it going up is fixed in our valuation, which for twenty nineteen, the state had us valued at four hundred and ninety-two million. Um, and for twenty twenty, the state's valuation for us is estimated at five hundred and six million. Um, so that's what they, they take the town's total values, um, and divide that essentially over the, the total to get a percentage. Um, you know, and that's kind of how we pay for the county fees, um, county taxes. I think we're number four or five in the county in value, so doesn't go by population, this is.
Oh yeah, goes by assessed value, you know. But boy, they certainly can't, you know, provide us law enforcement. That would be heavy on the other communities.
So this year was five hundred and sixty-six thousand and the budget for next year for the county taxes is five hundred and ninety thousand for us.
Yep, well, it is what it is. So have we now gone through everything one time?
Believe so.
Okay, so at our next meeting, you know, you try to get the budget committee together, we'll meet again as a board within a couple of weeks. And if we, and we can go back through if they've already, if they've met, and if not, we'll go through it another time. But since we now know, don't know when town meeting will be, sounds like maybe not even through the summer.
Yeah, and that's, um, you know, so I know it's kind of, there's not, there has not been great guidance from the state, um, or answers anyways from the state on the request from the main municipal association on behalf of the main towns and cities, um, to get a better understanding of how we can vote. Um, some towns are on calendar years and already had town meetings, um, some of the towns and cities that have charters, the councils are the ones that are budgets in, in a large majority of the state. Um, they're on a town meeting form of government like we are, so, um, they're kind of left to either conscious, you know, choose to violate the executive order that's in place and gathering more the next number of people to have a town meeting, or um, they need to, you know, some of them are talking about having, trying to do this by secret ballot in conjunction with the state, um, you know, vote in July. Um, and so if they do that, they'd be violating a statute which doesn't allow for those town meeting towns to do a vote that way for the budget. Um, you know, so we are, they're waiting for an answer from the governor's office on how to, and the state on how to, um, proceed. Um, those that are considering, strongly considering trying to do it by secret ballot, they're scrambling at this point to try and pull together and print off or put their town warrant articles into a ballot form, um, and have it coded, um, and have it available by next week. Um, I don't imagine that's something that we're gonna, one, even be able to do in a time, timely manner, even if we wanted to choose to go that route. Um, you know, so what we're left with and what the state did approve through the executive orders is, I think I mentioned before, is for town budget to carry from this year into next year. Um, you know, the problem, the only problem then being any, any changes and increases in, in the need for taxes to support projects or, you know, whether it's capital projects or operating costs, um, aren't approved yet. You can't commit taxes, um, on certain dates and you can't approve the other things that are in those warrant articles, like giving you the authority to, um, make final decision on, you know, plowing seasonal roads or, um, those types of things.
Doesn't the guidance go from meetings of ten to meetings of fifty next month?
It, that's the plan, yeah.
Well, how many people have been typically at our town meetings? Hasn't it been less than fifty if I'm recalling correctly? And in the auditorium at the school, I, I would think that we could maintain six feet between, you know, even if we had more than fifty people, I would think we could, you know, maintain six feet between people, you know, that are in the same family. So, I mean, I think we, I think we could make it work for end of June, early July, as long as the guidance doesn't change.
Yeah, and as long as fifty-one, fifty-two and fifty-three don't show up, um, you know, so you, you know, you'd either, again, be forced to, so I think last year was the first year in quite a few years, we did have more than fifty, and I don't think it was more than fifty by maybe five, um, in total, but um, yeah, it has generally been fairly low and a lot of towns are saying the same thing, but, you know, should, should you have more than fifty show up? You know, you can't turn people away for an open town meeting, um, which is then where it becomes a problem.
Yeah, but I mean, even if there was sixty people and that huge space, we could still maintain six foot. I, I would think that would be, you know, are somewhat of an exception by the state, but I guess I'm, I don't know.
That was one of the things that was in the letter was to either, um, essentially declare that town meetings are essential and allow for the order to be in violation, or, or I guess not allow it to be in violation by calling it essential and acknowledging that you can gather for that purpose as long as you can, as you're saying, meet the social distancing. Um, you know, but absent, absent that, we just kind of run that, um, at, at risk and, and kind of that principle that we're trying to ask others to follow in violating that.
When, when, like last year, I know it was a bigger crowd, but don't we normally have ten, twelve people who can't vote? Can we, can we turn them away? I'm not saying I want to, I'm just saying if, if we had enough people who are allowed to vote on the budget show up, we'd let them in first.
Um, yes, I mean.
Under fifty.
You're running into, you know, statute issues and I don't think you're allowed to turn them away. Um, you know, as taxpayers, they certainly have a right to be able to, you know, listen in, um, you know, but it's a public meeting. And so again, that's the challenge we have right now is you'd be in violation presumably of, you know, other state statute.
Okay.
I think we only had one or two last year that we, uh, that were allowed to vote, uh, by vote.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
Okay. I wasn't sure.
Well, at any rate, we don't have to figure this out tonight, because, you know, hopefully at the end of May, we get, you know, new orders or new recommendations from Augusta. All right, well, stay at that St. Home Water might even be extended, you know, past May thirty-fourth.
And it has to be posted thirty days in advance.
I believe so.
Thirty, is it thirty?
Yeah.
Try remember, there was, I know there was also some, um, someone from the Planning Commission was inquiring today about them having a meeting and the hope of seeing some of the warrant or the, some of the ordinance revisions and um, things like the helicopter ordinance, which would be new, or the, I guess, the aviation ordinance being, which would be new, um, be taken up potentially at town meeting, you know, when it happens, and so um, that was another point, I guess, to check in on with you guys on is, um, you know, do you want to have, kind of go back through some of those ordinances that you were looking at and be prepared to have those on for the annual town meeting, or to, um, group those as a separate, um, you know, special town meeting, just for ordinances, or how did you want to handle those?
Normally, I would say it should be a special town meeting, but it would probably wise this year to, if we can do everything in one meeting, just to do it in one meeting.
I agree.
It's more, more than necessary.
Yeah, I agree. We've been waiting to change the harbor ordinance for quite a while. That's something we worked on for a long time. I think I would like to see it on the town warrant.
Agreed.
Okay, so as long as we didn't have any from the last public hearing, as long as there weren't any substantial changes, and we can move forward with what had been presented last, um, I just need to make sure, go back and make sure that there weren't um, significant changes to that from the last hearing.
Well, we did have that one particular one on the harbor ordinance, changing from what was it, uh, to to accommodate the removal of the, uh, trailers, boat trailers?
Oh, right. Yeah, so as you mentioned before, if you go through and make the revision such that it is substantially different, then you do need to have that, that public hearing again, another public hearing to over essentially, you know, that version of it.
Right.
So we would have to have another public meeting just to change that one.
Well, to give a chance, to give a chance for the public to, you know, be able to hear it and discuss it. I think, yeah, we did the changes, if you had to the changes, it would have been at a selectmen's meeting probably last.
Yeah, we proposed them at a selectmen's meeting.
Right.
Right.
So they would need to go through a public hearing for those changes that were, um, put in.
So they wouldn't be able to be discussed at town meeting? It would have to be a separate
You know, you have a public, you have a public hearing before you have a so we'd have to have, we have to have another public hearing and then have a you know, actually vote on it.
Right.
Which, that, you know, adds a whole nother layer of complication, obviously.
Well, again, you're in the same boat of, you know, being able to have the the public hearing and being, I mean, again, the reality of the numbers that generally attend is, you know, a reality, um, that it can be met, uh, within the fifty usually, um. Yeah, but one again, that we need to be, presumably, we would like to have the guidance from the state on how to how to deal with that. I know another option that was thrown out there was a virtual, you know, through Zoom essentially, and having the 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 people that would be in attendance normally be in attendance via Zoom, and somehow, you know, just being able to confirm that's who they are and they're registered voters. Um, you know, so there was question about, you know, and and asking for the state to allow that as well.
If we do meet in person, we'd have to go to the auditorium or, you know, church fester or something. You have to go to a bigger space, certainly, and what our meeting room can accomplish.
Yeah.
If we want to maintain social distancing.
Yeah, and then we, of course, you know, you know, hopefully there are spaces that are, you know, okay with the use, and other schools have, you know, more or less closed down right now, um, you know, minimal staff use, so we'd have to hopefully, um, you know, be able to be in a place where those facilities could be used.
I, you know, is that going to be a problem for you know, annual town meeting if that school, you know, the building has been ordered closed by the school board or superintendent?
It's a possibility.
Yeah, okay. Well.
They want their monthly check, they should have to open.
Yeah, if they want the check, tell them they better open.
Well, let's just see how things unfold.
I agree.
So I I have a question about back to the ordinance, the harbor ordinance. So what if we did just put them in to vote on for the town meeting? And in assuming they would pass, and then in the whenever we can have a public hearing to change that wording, would that be reasonable to do it that way? That way, at least we'd have it voted on and hopefully approved.
So you'd go back to whatever the version was at the last public hearing, as long as there were no, um, you know, big negatives or, you know, things that were were said there, you could go with that version.
Right. And then down the road, you know, call another public, have another public hearing to change that, to add the other items like the trailers, boat trailers, and whatever else.
Right. Could do that.
So why don't, why don't we do it that way?
Yeah, take, yeah. At this point in time, we can get something accomplished, if not everything.
Right.
Definitely one step.
I think the, um, I got to double check where we were with the quarry. The quarry one and the helicopter, the air aviation one. Um, so those may or may not have been okay at the last hearings, had to double check.
There was some, with quarries, there was some sort of debate about enforcement, if I remember correctly, you know, what words we used. There was a, it had to do with, uh, drinking at the quarries, which obviously there's, you know, there's state statute about drinking in public.
Right.
But there was, you know, whether or not the cop wouldn't enforce it, or who wouldn't enforce it, but if it's the state statute, then the state statute, but I think that's what the debate was about the quarry, but it's been so long now.
Okay, we can bring those back for the next meeting and see where we, where those stand.
Well, it would be drinking, considered drinking in public, is that a town?
It's a state.
Part of the town, or is that a state? Law.
State statute, it's a state law.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the guidance we got from the county was that having, having clarity with the signage, um, at our properties about that makes that even more enforceable, then they can reference the sign, because there is something in the statute about being able to reference this, you know, I'll say it's signed per se, but, you know, they can then point to, look, you know, this is, this is, this is public property, and the, you know, the ordinance says you can't have these things here, the state statute says you can't, um, you know, I forget how it's worded, it's must it be intoxicated in public, um, it's more of a disorderly conduct thing, I think, than anything, um, so that would just give them, and we didn't have in the ordinance currently, you know, that language that says by ordinance, the town says, can't do these things. So I think, you know, from the county's perspective, it just gave, um, you know, them the ability to successfully take that, you know, to a judge if the need be.
I suggest we put that topic on another agenda, so we have a chance to look back at our note.
Sure.
Yeah, put it on our next meeting's agenda.
Okay.
All right, so let's go on to reporter town manager, since it's been circle now for a while.
I'll just try and keep it somewhat brief, um, already talked about the, um, health team, and so, I mean, you should probably know, majority of my time has been spent working with that. Um, we did treat the Washington, the town office, um, for ants a couple of weeks ago, um, you know, that that north northern wall, you know, both on the first floor and second floor is where we mostly were seeing them, you know, crawling across the screen, crawling on our arms, um, as we were working, um, so we did, um, I think it's the second year now we've noticed them, so did have that treated a couple of weeks ago. Um, should, you guys should, um, think about and maybe set a date to resume the strategic planning, um, strategic plan discussion um, as we were moving along pretty well there, um, in the winter. Um, so I don't know if you want to do that, you know, for a next meeting in conjunction with a budget follow-up, um, in ordinance review stuff, um, or just have it as a separate workshop.
I think we can have it with our regular meeting, because we're at the point now where it shouldn't take much more than, you know, I wouldn't even think half an hour. You know, we we've pretty well gone to the end where we needed to be, I feel like, with the two workshops, two or three workshops.
Great. Um, I am hopeful that, and so I was talking with Debbie about looking into the sage, you know, against which we'll use now, but to go to a cloud-based version of that and um, have that be one of the things that she's trying to do while, when she's not in the building, working, um, when she's working from home. Um, that's something that, you know, we should be able to do from there, um, is to connect doing that. Um, I did follow up with Kevin at PIA, uh, about the runway extension after our last meeting. Um, and our discussion went beyond the survey work and, um, you know, he was talking about funding, so the airport, all airports, it sounded like, are the majority of airports were getting funded, additional funds through the the CARES Act, um. And so we started talking about that and the maintenance needs and the cost that he encouraged to maintain the runway that is ours. And whether or not, um, the county funding, you know, for for the airport, um, which comes in every year, um, is quite substantial from the federal level, and a lot of that is, um, that is almost entirely based on, um, landings and in departures. Excuse me. And so, uh, that number, as I understand it, that they get from funding wouldn't be reached without Kevin his service in the, in the passenger counts from the islands, and so we started, you know, kind of talking about, is there, is there a way to have a conversation with the county about maybe trying to use some of those funds for the maintenance on the on the runways for the islands, um, that's quite minimal, obviously, um, but that's not something that at least I don't feel right, that it's something Kevin, as a business owner, has to pay for on our runway, um. So I just thought that'd be something worth, you know, kind of having a conversation about, if there's a way to help fund that stuff, that that work. Um, and we talked about the Advisory Board meeting, I don't know um, for Phil, kind of like where you're, where you sit, or what you were thinking about for the discussion on Thursday, um, but what the board thinks generally about, you know, the summer, the the changes in scheduling, um, you know, so that they can meet the distancing requirements. Um, you know, if we as a community kind of have a a thought or position on um, at least knowing or being part of some of those changes and the decisions to change going into summer. Um, you know, is there concern about capacity and what summer, you know, some summer traffic might look like? I mean, you know, there will be increased needs, increased people, um, irregardless of what, you know, how things move forward, so I'm trying to understand what that looks like with the current schedule, is something that, I guess, you know, has some concern. I know the the vehicle count's the same, but passenger count obviously is a lot different.
And we'll need, you know, a discussion about standby standby policy, obviously.
All right. Yeah, did, is that, has that changed? Have they, they changed the standby practice?
Um, well, I'm not sure exactly what they have done, but I am sure what they haven't done. And that is to comply with their promise in February to accept the line number and standby number procedure that was posed to them on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. Uh, they indicated that they would institute that policy and publicize it in the wind for several weeks, uh, during the winter and spring, so that people would be familiar with it by the time summer got here, and they haven't done any of that. And, uh, the impression I have, and it's only an impression, is that they have simply uh, foregone any wait time on the phone at all. You either phone and you get a busy signal, or you phone and you get somebody. If you get a busy signal, you just keep calling back, which would, I can't imagine uh, is going to be remotely workable in the summer uh, along with the other drastic uh, departures from norm that they have proposed down there. So I'm very concerned about that. I sent, uh, a reminder of that email out to everyone a couple of hours ago, so you can remember what the policy was before. Tomorrow, I mean, Thursday is the next, uh, main Advisory Board meeting, and I certainly will bring it up along with some other issue.
Okay, good. Is that it? Are you ending?
It is.
All right, reporter members.
Um, I've got let's see, uh, one thing, and that is the sea level rise commission asked for us all to review their uh, report and to see if we could come to an agreement about three different issues, and so I've taken the liberty of drafting a motion for each of those three issues. And I just sent it out to everyone about half an hour ago. And, uh, if that's agreeable with everyone, I will go ahead and make those motions now. So I move that the board amend the sea level rise committee mission to read as follows. The committee will research the threats of current climate change throughout our island, particularly those likely to result from rising sea levels, explore the range of possible mitigation, and report regularly to the Board of Selectmen, no less than bi-monthly, with the recommendation for dealing with those threats. And I've run that motion by the Sea Level Rise Board, and they are all in agreement that that would work precisely the way they hoped it would.
For your other two.
No, well.
So that was a motion. I'm waiting for a second.
Yeah, I was, I was seconding that motion. All right, so Elizabeth, you can write down someone, I guess. We all seconded at the same time. Is there any more discussion? Okay, hearing none, uh, Eric Gasper, any votes? Yes, uh, Phil Crossman?
Yeah.
Pam Alley?
Yes.
Jake Thompson?
Yes.
Donald Poole?
Yes.
All right.
And the second motion, I move that the board endorse the formation of an Island Climate Council as suggested in the Sea Level Rise twenty twenty report involving many and focusing on sustainability.
Oh, it's seconded out.
All right, it's been mo- seconded by Pam Alley. Any discussion? None, Eric Gas. Go ahead, Jake.
Do, is that going to be made up mostly of the Sea Level Rise Committee, or is it? I mean, we already have quite a few committee, I mean, we seems like we have a lot of committees already. Um, I I'm just worried about adding too many more, so.
No, the, uh, the Island Climate Council would involve uh, a lot of people, not just members of the Sea Level Rise Committee. Representatives from various organizations whose concerns would be addressed.
Hopefully, we can get some participation, yeah.
Chamber of Commerce, uh, select board member, um, or or town manager, a member from the Sea Level Rise Committee, at least one, one member from that committee. And.
So we're, if we endorse this, which, um, I think we probably should, but would this be a town committee, or would it be ju- we're just endorsing the formation of one?
Oh, it would be the formation of an Island Climate Council as suggested in the Sea Level Rise twenty twenty report that we all got a while ago. So it would be, uh, an independent council, not necessarily a town committee.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks, Phil. That's, that's my question.
Okay, is there any more discussion? Okay, hearing none, uh, Eric Gasper, any votes? Yes. Uh, Phil Crossman?
Yes.
Pam Alley?
Yes.
Jake Thompson?
Yes.
Donald Poole?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and I move that the board adopt the following policy. The town's consideration of all capital or municipal projects must henceforth involve examination of the impact of. And where applicable mitigation against sea level rise and related threats.
It's a movement seconded, any discussion? Jake, you have, or is it just background noise?
No, I didn't have.
Hearing no discussion, uh, Eric Gasper, any votes yes? Uh, Phil Crossman?
Yes.
Pam Alley?
Yes.
Jake Thompson?
Yes.
Donald Poole?
Yes.
Hey, anything else under reporter members?
I had, I had a couple of people ask me about the updates that the. Townsman putting out, everyone heard that there was at least another case of COVID nineteen and they just wanted to know. Why that wasn't reported or if it's not true, I guess. I don't know if it's true or not, but everyone assumed it was true. Why it wasn't on the updates.
Yeah, so I think we tried to cover it, um, generally in one of the updates, there wasn't an acknowledgement from the, from the health team. For us, for a second one and presumably probably, um, at this point, wouldn't be for the future ones after, you know, learning a little bit more about the process. Um, so the CDC, as you know, or you might know, doesn't report at the top, to the town level. Um, they follow up with positive cases of those who, um, have tested positive and then start the contact tracing from there. Um, the only other person that finds out other than the patient would be, um, the person who requested the test. And so if the test was done here, the medical center would, um, whoever requested it would be aware. Um, but our public health officer and the town government wouldn't be made aware by CDC. Um, you know, so it would, it would require some sort of release form from the patient between the patient and the medical provider to. To allow us to know who that is, um, or for them to tell us themselves. You know, so the, again, the CDC is, um, been recommending that, and they've explained why. At a state level, they don't release it by town because so many towns in Maine are so small, such, you know, small populations. Um, that acknowledging that there is a positive in a particular town might, in fact. Um, you know, be of concern for HIPAA law violation and the privacy of the patient. Um, so their, their big recommendation, I guess, through all of that is just to continue for, for everyone to act as though. The virus is here, has been here, and that your actions, you know, should be consistent with with that of if you had it yourself. Um, you know, and so again, with the stay at home order still in place or the stay safer at home order in place now. Um, you know, folks should still be staying home if possible. Um, you know, limiting going out, interactions, all of that kind of stuff that that has been consistent for the last month or more. Um, that was the position of the CDC and where, you know, what we can and can't, kind of what we can and can't, um, share.
So the CDC wants Facebook to be more involved than they are on these small towns. I don't, I mean. I see where they don't want the HIPAA laws, but, I mean, this isn't the nineteen thirties, uh, people are talking about it all over everything, so. I mean, uh, it just seems backwards to me, I guess.
Um, I don't think our team disagrees. I mean, at the very least, you would think that the public health officer. Um, would be notified of a positive, again, not even saying who it is, but, um. You know, so that, then it can be left to the communities to decide how and if they proceed to acknowledge another case. I mean, it's not, again, just about this, there's other communicable diseases that are written in statute that. Um, again, usually the information has to be reported upwards, um, nothing talks about it being reported from the state, you know. Down, if the state's the one that finds out about it. Most of the time it's us, the local level that finds out about some of those things, so. Um, I think we would agree generally, we we do see the value in at least being informed of a positive as a team, but it's just, again, not something that. They'll notify us about.
So I have a, I have a question about that. Um, so if there were, if. Say, for example, I were to be sick, God forbid, I would be, I would have, and I didn't have to go to the hospital. I, I would be required to self quarantine, correct?
Um, well, the, yeah, the guidelines right now are good, I mean.
I mean, I guess my question is, if somebody is sick on the island, they are told that they need to be self quarantined. I mean, are they, are people checked on? Would a person be checked on by the, you know, who, the doctor or whoever? To make sure that they are staying home and not out and about with the chance.
I can't, yeah, I guess I can't say what other doctors are gonna do for someone they may have seen, but, you know, the. What we know is that CDC does the contact tracing and and relies on the information. Um, during those phone calls when they're, when they're doing the tracing to determine whether there was a significant exposure or not. Um, if there is a significant exposure at whatever point they're at, they then talk to the next person, um, and the next person. But it all does rely on people telling, um, you know, a fair account of what happened, uh, who they came into contact with for how long. Um, you know, and they do rely on, um, the people they're giving that information to, to either isolate or quarantine, um, to do those things. So it is a, you know, putting a lot on the, on those they're contacting to do the right thing.
Okay.
Again, a lot of those things are things that we're asking of people and it shouldn't. We shouldn't have to wait for a confirmed positive or the next confirmed positive to be acting the ways that they're suggesting, um. You know, the.
No, I understand, I think we all understand that. We know what we should, should do and need to do and we should, gotta be doing it. Um, but, you know, if you had, if you have the flu, you might go to the grocery store.
They say you shouldn't, but you might.
And so that's, that was my, I guess, my question is, if somebody has mild symptoms and they've been tested and they know. What if they say, well, I'm gonna wear my mask and go to the grocery store? Is there any way to prevent? People from possibly doing that if they do have mild symptoms and, and have tested positive?
So I mean, if you have mild symptoms, generally, you should definitely be staying home. If you have tested positive, presumably the CDC says you shall stay home. Um, but, but again, it does put a lot on the person they've communicated that to and who has tested positive to follow those. Direct, that direction.
Runways for the island.
Okay, uh, anything else for reporter members? Okay, I've seen that, I move we adjourn.
Second.
I've been seconded by Pam Alley, uh, Eric Gasper, any votes yes? Phil Crossman?
Yes.
Pam Alley?
Yes.
Jake Thompson?
Yes.
Donald Poole?
Yes.
All right, thank you, everybody, for tuning in. Have a good evening.
Night. Thank you, good night.
Good night.
Night now.